Okay. Good morning. I'd like to welcome you to the Board of Selectmen meeting. It's Monday, March 2nd, 2015. It is now 8:35. First order of business is a Pledge of Allegiance. I'd like to ask Selectman Kellney to lead us, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Gary. Item two is public forum, limited to three minutes regarding any agenda item. Anybody wishing to address the board on any agenda item? See none. We'll move to item three, approval of the minutes, 3 dot 1, minutes of February 11th, 2015, special meeting. Do I have a motion?
No.
Is there a second? Any additions or corrections to the February 11th special meeting? Okay. See none. I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, approved. 3 dot 2, February 17th, regular meeting. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? Any additions or corrections? All right. See none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Gary?
I'm out.
Oh, abstention. Okay. That's four in favor, one abstention, Tracy. Item four, Guilford High School Building Committee. Beau, would you like to join us, please? Okay. 4 dot 1, discuss and take possible action on award of RFP 2 dash 1415, Guilford High School Network Switching Equipment FFNE. Pam, do you want to join us on this? Okay. We're joined by Pam Millman, our in-house counsel and purchasing manager. And Beau, your last name again, I'm sorry?
Loraya.
Loraya, from Kona Roadin, is that correct?
Kona Roadin.
Kona Roadin, okay. Who's consultant for the building committee. The floors are yours.
Okay. So, after the new year, back in January, we issued three RFPs and one invitation to bid for four different categories of technology equipment for the new high school building. The first category was the network switching equipment, and that's the equipment located throughout the building that allows all the computers to talk to the servers, to talk to the Internet, and to basically communicate within the building. The second category was the wireless networking equipment, and again, that's basically your Wi-Fi network within the building. Third bid was the telephone system, which is self-explanatory. And lastly, was an invitation to bid for a lot of different infrastructure components, cables, cords, kind of miscellaneous items that are needed just to make it all work together. We had a very good response to the, to the RFPs. Between seven and 14 bidders between the four categories with a pretty varied range of pricing and responses to those RFPs. We did a shortlist for each of the four categories, excuse us, we did a shortlist for the three RFPs, and we brought the top three vendors in on February 12th and 13th for a scope review meeting with each of those. We spent about an hour with each firm reviewing their solution, gave the Kevin Mitchell and the IT folks from the high school a chance to ask questions and clarify woes in the bid response, gave us a chance to evaluate the vendors themselves, to see if we felt they would be able to adequately provide the services to the town and then, long-term, support the solutions as well. At the end of the day, the, we went with what we felt was the best solution for each of the categories for the school and for the town. For the network switching components, we went with a company called the Ergonomic Group. They're out of Glastonbury, I believe, and they presented a solution from Hewlett Packard. And fortunately, that solution is already used throughout most of the town schools. So there's really not a lot of learning curve for the IT staff. They're familiar with the product, and the hardware itself comes with a lifetime warranty. So if anything does break over the life of the equipment, it's free replacement from Hewlett Packard. The integrator, the Ergonomic Group, they do a lot of work in the K through 12 space. Very good firm to work with, very professional. They did a very good presentation, and again, we felt that was the best choice for that bid category. Their price came in at $236,015. We did make a couple of adjustments. So their net bid amount, or the net amount of the contract is going to be $235,595. The original estimate we gave to the state of Connecticut was $250,000, so we came in roughly $14,500 below the estimate. For the wireless networking, we went with a firm out of Farmington, Connecticut called the Walker Group.
Okay. Beau, can I just stop you for a second?
Sure.
Since we have these separated on the agenda, why don't we deal with one at a time?
Sure.
All right. So, the first item we have is the network switching equipment, which you are recommending the ergonomic group.
Ergonomic.
Ergonomic group.
Yeah.
Excuse me. I read that wrong. And for a cost of $235,595, did I understand you correctly?
That's correct.
Okay. Not the 236,015, which is on my sheet?
Correct. They have some duplicate equipment in their bid response that will be pulled out.
Okay.
And if I could, it would seem that he recommended to the Guilford High School Building Committee, the consultant recommended to the Guilford High School Building Committee, who also voted, you know, two weeks ago, to accept his recommendations. So now, he's kind of coming on behalf of the High School Building Committee as well as, as the consultant.
Okay. At the 235,595, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And that's the building committee's recommendation to the Board of Selectmen?
Correct.
Okay. All right. So why don't we take that as a motion first?
I'll make a motion.
Okay. Is there a second? Oh. All right. Any, any discussion on the, that motion to accept that bid? Gary?
Only just a question. I mean, I see ranges going up to $347,000.
Yeah.
I mean, why, why the big variety? Is it different equipment, or just a different concept of what would happen?
It is different equipment. We got responses back from a bunch of different manufacturers, Hewlett Packard, Avaya, Extreme Networks, Dell, I think there was one or two other manufacturers in there as well. Different companies give different discounts, and with anything else, it depends how much they really want to have the business. Like I said earlier, we had a very good response to this RFP. There were 10 bidders who put in proposals, and, you know, certain ones at the very high end, quite frankly, probably weren't as interested in the work. Because we did see similar solutions presented from the same manufacturer with very different price points. Some of that, too, is some of the services, besides actual hardware itself, the professional services to come in, configure it, install it, train the staff. We saw a pretty wide range of pricing in that section as well. Yeah, so again, we didn't go with the absolute lowest price. We felt that the lowest-priced solution, it just wasn't a solution that you would put into a, a large high school like this, where you're going to integrate other networks into it. It was really more of almost a residential-type solution. But we didn't go with the most expensive either, because it was overkill, it was more than the school really needed. And what I'm saying is true for all the categories. It's a good middle-of-the-road solution with a solid integrator, very solid, well-known equipment, and in this case, it had the warranty as well. So it is really a good fit for, for the school.
Just to follow up on Gary's question. In all of the other bids, are we talking similar equipment from similar manufacturers? And the pricing was just the installation or the support?
So, I mean, the bids included both the hardware itself-
Right.
-and the configuration installation.
Okay.
That's true for all the three RFPs.
Mm-hmm.
The invitation to bid, that's just components that just will be shipped, and they'll show up in boxes. There's no services associated with it.
Okay. So, were they, maybe I didn't ask this correctly, were they going to supply the same equipment? Each bidder was going to supply the same equipment?
Or different equipment? Different equipment.
Okay. They were.
So, yeah, so one bidder, for example, the one we selected, went with Hewlett Packard.
Okay. That's what I'm trying to get at.
Yeah. The Walker Group did a Dell solution.
Gotcha.
Consolidated Computing did Extreme Networks.
Okay.
Different manufacturers with different price points.
Okay. Okay. Good. Any further questions or discussion on the motion? See none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
And also authorize the first electman to sign the contract.
Okay. All right. Okay. Beau, we'll go to 4 dot 2, which we're talking about the wireless network.
Sure. So again, similar to the network equipment, so the wireless networking will allow the wireless devices within the school, laptops, tablets, iPads, iPhones, other wireless devices to connect to the school network. Again, similar to the, the network switching equipment, we looked at three shortlisted vendors. It was a mix of solutions presented. The solutions included Hewlett Packard, a solution from, I believe it was Marachi, which is a subsidiary of Cisco, and a solution by Aruba Networks, which is the one we ultimately went with. The Aruba solution, Aruba's the manufacturer of the wireless equipment. The town and the school system currently has a large installed base of the Aruba wireless equipment. Again, the IT staff is familiar with this equipment. They know how to configure it, they know how to manage it, and the, the vendor itself, who we went with, the Walker Group, again, does a lot of work in the K through 12 space. They have some additional kind of network management tools available to Kevin and his team to help monitor the network, and those are at no additional charge. They're kind of just bundled into their solution offering. If you look at the, I'm not sure if you received the, the whole summary or not, there was a lower bidder, Total Communications. However, their solution did not meet the requirements of the RFP. The access points themselves didn't meet the technical requirements that we set forth. They also did not include the physical installation of the access points into the ceiling. So really, their bid was not eligible, because they really didn't meet the requirements.
Okay.
And that's when we went to the Walker Group, who again, met all the requirements. It was a solution that the town's already familiar with. Their price was, their base bid was $97,398.81. We did elect to go with a few add-ons, which brought the total amount, and this is the amount of the contract, to $104,511.21. At the request of the building committee, we're going to be adding a few additional access points in some of the higher-density areas, those being the gym and auditorium. We just want to make sure we have enough coverage in those larger spaces to handle the number of devices that are potentially possible in the larger spaces. So, the additional cost is basically those additional eight, 12, I believe it's 18 additional access points. Correction, 10 additional access points, plus the installation for those, and that's what brings us up to the 104,511.21.
Okay. So, you're recommending, and the Guilford High School Building Committee is recommending that we award a bid to the Walker Group of $104,511.21, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
And the original estimate to the state of Connecticut was $175,000, so a pretty large delta there.
That's a pretty big difference.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is this all reimbursable?
It is partly reimbursable. I don't know off the top of my head the exact rate. Bill Mulligan-
He does.
...would know that.
Okay.
I think it's part of the-
Part of the 30%?
Yeah.
Okay. Good. Yeah. Okay. Okay. I think, made a motion, please?
I would move to approve. RFP 3, 1415, to the Walker Group, an amount of 104,511.21.
Second. Motion.
And authorize the first electman to, first electman to sign the contract.
Okay. And you second that, my Charles. All right. Motion's been made, and second, is there any discussion on the motion? And then I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. Okay. We're up to 4 dot 3. Okay.
So this was for the telephone system. So the existing telephone system that's in the high school today is probably going on 20-plus years old. It's an older solution from NorTel Networks, which is not even in business anymore. Parts for the existing system are very difficult to get. Support for the system is hard to find. It's just outlived its useful life. It's 20-plus years old, and as we all know-
You can't place those rotary phones anymore?
You know? There's eBay. You gotta buy them on eBay. So we looked at new phone systems-
Those are the old, as old as the ones we have in town hall.
Yeah. Not quite. So we did look again at three shortlisted vendors. We had solutions from Avaya, from NEC, and from Mitel. Those are the three different manufacturers. As we went through the different shortlisted vendors, they all gave very good presentations. All the solutions would meet the needs of this, of the school. We went with Carousel Industries, they had an Avaya solution. The reason for that was, A, they were the lowest-cost vendor, and secondly, there's a large installed base with Avaya phone systems elsewhere in the school system. At some point in the future, if the schools get interconnected on the network, their various phone systems can be connected together as well, and there's some opportunity in the future to reduce some long-term, ongoing telecommunication expenses. You can consolidate some of those expenses into one site by having all the different systems network together. Again, the, the staff is familiar with the Avaya solution, it's in the other buildings Carousel Industries themselves, they're a very large Avaya integrator. They do a lot of work also in the K through 12 space, very technically competent, good support. And again, their bid happened to be the lowest one, at $71,760. That was the base bid. We did upgrade some of the phone sets. I believe it was only, I think, $21 per phone set for the upgrade, and there was 92 of them. So there was an upcharge of $1,932, bringing the contract amount to $73,692. And that's versus a state estimate of $79,000. So again, we came in slightly under budget there.
Okay. So your recommendation to the Board of Selectmen from the Building Committee is that we award the bid to Carousel Industries for $73,692, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
I'll move that.
There's a second? All right. And authorizing the first electman to sign the contract. Okay. Motion's been made, and second, is there any discussion?
Only to note that the high bid was $241,000. I mean, again-
That's, that's quite a difference.
That's a huge difference. Huge difference.
Do you want to comment on why that's such a difference?
Sure, I can. So, we looked at two different options for the phone system. One option's where all the equipment is physically located in the school building and managed by the school personnel. The second option's what's called a hosted solution, where only the phone sets are in the building, and all the logic is up in the cloud, at, at a data center, basically. The downside to a hosted solution is you pay a monthly fee for that service. So that $240-something thousand is the, the five-year extended cost to manage this service. At the end of the five years, you're left with absolutely nothing. You have 200-something phone sets with nothing to connect them to. So basically, you're starting over in five years, or you're renegotiating the contract. But clearly, to own the equipment for 73 and change, you're not owning that for the next 15, 20 years, versus 240, 250,000 every five years, it's really a no-brainer.
Does that connection to the cloud, though, include phone service, though, or no?
No.
It doesn't? Okay. Because I know some companies, that's included, so it makes sense at that point. It basically costs nothing.
Right. Yeah, we still need the incoming lines, coming in and backlines.
And really, there's no benefit.
There was no benefit. No. We wanted to explore the option, just to see what it would look like, but it didn't make any financial sense, it didn't make technical sense. There was no good reason to go with it.
Okay. Any further questions or discussion? All right. So I'll call for a vote on the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. Okay. We have one more vote.
Okay. The last one was an invitation to bid. As I mentioned before, there's no services associated with this. This is just a bid for cable managers, hatch cords, fiber cables, miscellaneous components that are just needed to, to make the physical connections for all the different devices. Again, like I mentioned before, these are devices or equipment that'll just be delivered by the vendor. Kevin and his staff will be responsible for installing them and connecting them to the various devices that are in the three RFPs. We had an estimate here of $31,500. The contract amount that we're going with is $15,662 by Versatile Communications out of Massachusetts. There were three lower bidders listed. However, the, the bid responses didn't provide the, the data we were looking for, the, the product information to see what we were bidding on. You couldn't tell from the bid response if it was the same quality that we had specified in the RFP. We also have worked with Versatile before, they're a very good vendor, they're reliable. So we felt that was in the best interest of the town at a lower price than some of the other vendors, who also met the requirements. So basically, we went with the lowest qualified bidder.
Okay. And there was no change in price?
No change.
Okay. You said it was Massachusetts firm?
Yeah.
They're based out of Mass.
This is Marlborough, Connecticut, on my sheet.
I think it's supposed to be Marlborough, Massachusetts.
Is that right?
I believe so. We can double-check that.
The previous sheet had Versatile, it's Marlborough, Mass.
Okay. All right. My, my sheet is incorrect. Okay. Okay. Do I have a motion to accept that, that bid?
So moved.
Second.
Authorize the first electman to sign.
Okay. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay. Well done. Pam, is there anything you want to answer?
No.
Okay. Very good.
Great. Thank you.
Good presentation. Thank you very much.
My only comment, having put in one of these a bunch of years ago, is everybody thinks this is science. I mean, it's art. I mean, everything is a little different, you know, this connects to that, and if you don't understand the way this connects to that, it doesn't work. It's just a-
It could be a nightmare.
It can be a nightmare. Yes.
Item five, Director of Human Resources, Mitch Colbatt, 5 dot 1, consider and take possible action on a new memorandum of understanding between the town of Guilford and Post University. Morning, Mitch.
Morning. If you may recall, some of you, four years ago, Post University had requested the town become a partner in education, and we did have a memo, memorandum of understanding signed between the town and Post. It's been four years, they'd like to update that. There, I'll bring to your attention the salient changes that go with this. On, on the downside, they've reduced the tuition grant, which is 10%, but only now for spouses and children. It was parents, siblings, spouses, and children. They've cut that down a bit. On the other hand, they have, they will work with town employees, not just to transfer credits earned at other higher education institutions, but also, they're looking to accept certain credits through employee development trainings offered by the town of Guilford. And so, that may help people trying to get a degree and be able to transfer credits. And the other thing that I think is very helpful to us is they've also added in the fact that we will have access to their career services department, and allow us to do our job postings through, through Post University. So anytime we have, you know, any postings, we can, we can send it through to their career services, and they'll help advertise at no cost to us for, for any openings that we have for employees. So, other than that, there's, there's no change. Post has been in contact with me regularly. I'm not sure how many people have taken advantage of this, but they come down to our benefits fair, they send off flyers for us to use for new employees, and also occasionally, as I think you know, I will send off an email when there's something new that's going on there, an offering. So, with that, I just asked, they wanted to update the memo of understanding, and with your vote, we can do that.
Okay. Any questions?
It'd be nice to know how many people are taking advantage of it.
I can, I can look into that. I'm not sure. I know they're, they're fairly aggressive with the police staffs around the state. In fact, they originally, going back four years ago, the idea was just to make this a memo for police departments. But I pushed them to make it for the entire town, and they've, they've accepted that and gone forward with that. I'll try to look into that, Gary.
So we need a motion-
We need a motion.
Except this. To accept and/or adopt the new memorandum of understanding between the town of Guilford and Post University. And does the selectman have to sign?
Yes, I do.
And authorize the first electman to sign. Second. Have to. Motion's been made, and second, is there any discussion? All right. See none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you. Thanks, Mitch.
Thank you.
Hope that some of our employees make use of it. Item six, discuss and take possible action on application from the police department for noise-control barriers for the Fury and the Fire Fairgrounds event to benefit the Special Olympics taking place June 13th, 2015, from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM.
Morning.
Good morning, gentlemen. How are you doing?
Good.
You gonna create some noise?
We're gonna try to.
Okay.
Just a little background on the event. As you guys know, the police department has a pretty longstanding relationship with Special Olympics, do a lot of fundraising all year round. So Dan and I, and it's Dan's credit, has put a lot of effort into creating a new event this year, try to create funds in a, in a new way, try to get a lot, a lot of community involvement in this one. We're doing a, a teamed event down to fairgrounds. It's, in essence, a race that'll have some, some mental and physical challenges along the way, but we're trying to make a whole family day out of it and bring a lot of, of town businesses on board. So there's going to be a touch-a-truck type event with some military equipment and police and fire equipment. There's going to be a police canine demonstration, be some food trucks on, on site, and a lot of local businesses will be coming down and setting up more or less a vendor stand and advertise or sell whatever they have. Our goal is to, you know, hopefully make this a reoccurring event, but this is our, kind of our beta test year, and we'll see how it works out. So, in our effort to keep everyone as, as happy on board as possible, we wanted to try to get the noise control. We don't foresee making a lot of noise down there. We're gonna have a, probably some amplified music near the start line, not, not fairground-wide, but near the start line, and there'll be some police sirens and probably some dogs barking here and there, and some trucks coming in and out. I don't foresee a whole lot more noise beyond that. And the, the noise of the people, actually, you know, taking part in the event.
Okay. Okay. I will add that the police department has already approved, I guess they better, has already approved the application, so it remains for us to also approve it.
Attached is a letter that we're gonna give to all the neighbors, just to let them know, we're gonna, it's, in the event this gets approved, we're gonna get that out as soon as possible to give them the heads-up with as much notice as possible that, you know, on that date, couple months in the future, there will be some noise down there. So we can try to keep the peace between them and the agricultural society as best we can Society the best we can, and keep everybody as, as happy as we can.
I think you'll have copies of this.
Yeah.
All right. I will accept a motion to approve this.
Some move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Good luck with this.
Thank you. We invite you guys to make a team, three-person teams, come on down and compete.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Always accused of making noise, anyway.
I would hope this one, you know, it's daytime, good cause.
I don't think this is going to be a noiser than the others.
No.
That's why we have the fairgrounds, I mean, that's one of the reasons for the fairgrounds, is you have events like this.
That's right.
Does have to be reviewed quickly, Z.
That's true. It goes on the list of...
But I don't think it'll be a noiser than the fairgrounds at night with concerts.
No. Item seven, consider and take possible action to set a public hearing date of March 16, 2015, 8:30 AM at the Guilford Town Hall, on the 2015 Community Development Block Grant Program. Do I have a motion?
Some move.
Some move.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
And we need, we need to sign this, please, okay? That's not it. Tracy, you have that for me?
I don't have to sign that one.
Okay, because I don't have anything for that. Discuss and take possible action on the Girl Scout Day proclamation, which we have in our packet, do I have a motion?
Some moves.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Item nine, Appointments and Resignation Act, right, nine dot one, Act on a Resignation Received from Pilar Gonzalez from the Economic Development Commission, do I have any motion placed?
Some move.
Second.
Regrets, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Nine dot two, Act on a Reappointment of Brendan Maurer to the Water Pollution Control Authority for a term to expire July 31, 2018.
Some move.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Ten, Request for the Use of Town Property, I've got ten-one to ten-three.
I would move that we approve the three sign requests and the use request as delineated in the agenda.
Second. Motion's been made, the motion's been seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay. Item eleven, any correspondence? Anybody? I have not received any. Item eleven, Committee Reports, I, I don't have any, Gary?
I would only say that I think the Energy Task Force has completed all of its hurdles to put the EV station in the parking lot, and it's on, Pam's not here, but I, I think it's been ordered, and...
The signs.
The signs have been ordered, and hopefully it will meet the installation target of April 15.
Yep, everybody's on board with the signs, so we're all set.
Everybody's on board with the signs, with everything.
Good. I haven't gotten the old business, only old businesses, we're still shoveling and plowing snow. Even, even though it's, today, what, March 2nd, it doesn't end, okay?